Welcome, everyone, to City Council Meeting for October 14th, 2019. I'd like to remind everybody before we get started to please turn off all your electronic devices or put them on silent because they do interfere with our recording equipment and with our hearing up here on the table. So, Madam Clerk, would you have a roll call to the Assembly Forum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Terry McLuhan?
I'm here.
Melissa Green?
Here.
Harry Meyer?
Yes.
Susan Harmon?
Here.
Good.
We have six.
All right, if we can have a question, ladies and gentlemen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Get a motion on the approval of the agenda, please.
Motion to approve.
Tag it.
All right. I have two items. One, due to a lack of applicant, we're going to be removing item number four under new business, the downtown temporary entertainment district. And I'd like to insert number five, a resolution for the parks vehicle for acceptance of the bank's financing. And then number six is to discuss the November 11th Veterans Day meeting.
November 6th?
11th, I'm sorry.
Or 11th?
Yeah.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, is that? It's a Veterans Day parade?
No, Veterans Day meeting. November the 11th is a Monday. The offices will be closed.
Oh, oh.
For Veterans Day and see what we want to do.
So, there'll be a revote on that?
Yeah. Does anybody have anything else? Yes, ma'am.
You're wanting to remove number four, not defer?
No, removed completely.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The North Street property, did the bids come in?
Uh, we did. We, uh, well, yes and no. We didn't receive any bids. But if you want to talk about it, we can put that on the agenda for the next meeting.
Please.
We can do that for the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. So, all right, anybody else? Are all those in favor of the agenda as amended, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No moves. Get a motion to approve the minutes for the special meeting on September 16th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any additions, corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor of the minutes as submitted, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for September 23rd.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. McLuhan. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the minutes as submitted for the regular meeting, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I abstain, I wasn't here.
All right. That brings us to, we got a couple of positions vacant on the planning commission. We had James Mitchell resign from the planning commission, which gives us a vacancy on there, plus our other vacancies. So, we now have two vacancies back on the planning commission. If anybody out there in video land, TV land's interested, come back and put in an application. Also, I guess that's it, public comments. No public comments, all right. We're going to go right into business then for the unfinished business of ordinance number 2287 on vacating an alley between Lot 1 and Lot 2 in Block 8 Freeman Edition.
I make a motion, we read 2287 for the second reading by Title Only.
Second.
Suspend the rules?
Yeah. Suspend the rules and place it on second reading. We got a second, Ms. Harmon? Any discussion? All those in favor? Whoops, no, wait a minute, I got to read, sorry about that, I'm rushing this.
No, we have to vote first and then read it.
Yeah, she's got to take a roll call.
Mr. McLuhan?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Six, zero. Ordinance number 2287, an ordinance vacating an alley between Lot 1 and Lot 2 in Block 8 Freeman Edition.
So, now I get to do it?
Yes.
All those in favor of ordinance number 2287 on the second reading, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I say move.
Now, what did we just do?
We just passed ordinance number 2287 on the second reading.
Nobody ever made a motion to vote on it.
We just, yeah, we did.
Oh, we didn't. We made a motion to read it, we never made a motion to vote on it.
Mr. Meyer, what was your, what was your motion?
I made a motion to pass it, to read it.
By Title Only.
Yes.
And then there was a voice, then there was a roll call vote on doing?
Yes.
Calling through his motion. It passed, I read the title, and then there was a vote on accepting the second reading.
It was?
There was a voiced vote.
Then, aren't we supposed to make a motion to approve it on its second reading?
I thought somebody did.
Nobody did.
We didn't?
No, my son.
All right, okay, I need a motion and it's approved on the second reading.
I make a motion, we approve ordinance number 2287 on its second reading.
Second.
Thank you, Terry.
You're welcome.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. McLuhan, okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules and read ordinance number 2287 by Title Only for its third reading.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion? Okay. Hearing none.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. McLuhan?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry, she's got to read it first.
Ordinance number 2287, together we can do this, I'm sure. An ordinance vacating an alley between Lot 1 and Lot 2 in Block 8 Freeman Edition.
Now, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2287.
Second.
On its third reading. Thanks, Bob, thank you.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. McLuhan?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Six, zero.
Okay. That brings us to the new business of renew of a franchise for Joe Gunnell's cametures. Motion to discuss?
So, move.
Second.
All right. Any questions, comments?
I, Miss, yes. I haven't spoken with Smitty, he's not here, I don't know that there's any problems with anything. I've not heard any complaints. So, what I think we're just trying to do is just renew like it was.
This one, yes, sir.
I make a motion that we approve the renewal of Mr. Gunnell's application as submitted.
I'll second.
Okay. Just for point of information, I have talked to Smitty and he had no problems, so he's in complete agreement. So, all right, we got a motion.
I signed a motion over here.
Question?
Yesterday, expect me to remember?
What are the actual dates of this contract?
It will begin the first?
January 1st.
Two weeks, like, two years later.
Okay.
To approve?
Anybody else, Ms. Harmon?
I see the two years. What is the date of the, is it the first of the year?
Right.
Okay.
Anybody else? All right, all those in favor to approve the application, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, all right, so move. Congratulations. Okay, well, we appreciate you too, most of you.
I'm still a better guy than he is.
You're the only one, no. All right, um, all right, we got, now we have an application for rezoning of one planer point. Get a motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Second. Has everybody seen, remember what we're, this is the, uh...
Where is what?
This is, where is it? It's right behind Queen Anne, the...
Oh, yes, okay.
Behind Eckman Bank.
I follow.
It's the only place that's residential and surrounded by commercial, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Yeah.
Sure.
Ms. Harmon?
I just have a question about how it's written. It said, "The application was approved," and then there's another blank in that, it says "denied" with five i's, comma, blank nays, and abstentions.
That's planning's report.
Okay, but did...
Now, it has to come to counsel.
Understand, I'm just asking, am I looking at, it was approved?
Right.
I just want to clarify, with five i's?
Yes. No nays.
Okay, because the denied was throwing me a little bit, so.
Well, I think it says approved or denied, and it just went, this application was, and check mark is by approved.
I think it's right here.
Right there.
I know, I know, but it just...
And then it says denied, and what, you can't see the check mark there.
Oh, okay, so it's just missing on our copy?
Exactly.
Ah, gotcha, okay, well, that's what was throwing me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any questions? Mr. McLuhan?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to sign this ordinance number and read it for its first reading.
I'll second that.
This is an ordinance?
The second part is an ordinance.
Oh, okay.
You've got a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Was Mr. Meyer the second?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Right.
Any opposed?
The ordinance number will be 2288, an ordinance amending the zoning of certain real property within the corporate city limits of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, commonly known as one planer point. Whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs have previously adopted planning and zoning regulations for the city, and whereas Eureka Springs Community Center Foundation has petitioned for the property to be rezoned, and whereas the City Planning Commission has performed its duties with regard to the petition. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that section one, certain real property at one planer point in the City of Eureka Springs, Carroll County, Arkansas, and better described on the attached sheet, is hereby rezoned by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, from R2 Contemporary Residential to C2 Contemporary Commercial. Section two, the city planning and zoning map shall be updated to reflect this change at its next printing. Section three, all provisions of the ordinances of the City of Eureka Springs in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance are, and the same were hereby, and all other provisions of the ordinances of the City of Eureka Springs, not in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance, shall remain in full force and effect. Section four, severability, should any sentence, paragraph, clause, phrase, or section of this ordinance be adjudged or held to be unconstitutional, illegal, or invalid, the same shall not affect the validity of this ordinance as a whole, or any other part of provision thereof, other than the parts so decided to be invalid, illegal, or unconstitutional, and shall not affect the validity of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code as a whole.
Mr. McLuhan?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this ordinance. What was the number again?
2288.
Re, approve ordinance number 2288 on its reading.
Get a second?
Second.
All those, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. McLuhan?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to suspend the rules and read ordinance number 2288 for its second reading by Title Only.
Second.
Hearing none.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. McLuhan?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Six, zero, ordinance number 2288, an ordinance amending the zoning of certain real property within the corporate limits of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, commonly known as one planer point.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2288 on its second reading.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to suspend the rules and read the ordinance number 2288 for its third reading.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Harmon, seconded. Discussion? Mr. Thomas?
I'd just like to know the reason that we are going to read it three times.
May I explain?
Me too.
Yes, please.
It's already been through the planning commission, they approved it 100 percent. It's, it's a cut and dry deal. There hasn't been any dissent from anyone of the neighbors, it's all gone through that. And it's, the community center has, is the current owner of the property, I'm not sure how the title has taken place, but I know that's the situation, and the Queen Anne Mansion property has it under contract to purchase. And so, what this would do, because there's no dissension in the city to go ahead and, and I'm not talking about an emergency clause, but go ahead and do the third reading, and then they can go ahead and proceed towards their closing, and, and those funds can be put to use for the community center, that's all.
Thank you.
Ms. Snyder?
Okay, so in other words, no emergency clause, meaning in 30 days as usual. Okay, that I have no problem with.
Okay, any further discussion? Eddie?
Yes.
Mr. McLuhan?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2288, an ordinance amending the zoning of certain real property within the corporate city limits of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, commonly known as one planer point.
Mr. McLuhan?
I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and approve ordinance number 2288 on its third final reading.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. McLuhan?
Yes.
Six, zero.
All right, thank you, I'll conclude that one. You're welcome. All right, that brings us to our next new business item, is ordinance for the animal law change. Get a motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss.
Second.
All right, Ms. Green, Ms. Harmon brought this up, you know, when, any comments? None, all right, any...
No, I was just going to make a motion.
All right, make a motion.
I make a motion that we assign the ordinance a number and read it into...
For its first reading.
For the first reading.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, I'm sorry, Ms. McLuhan?
I was slow to raise my hand, sorry, sir.
You got to be quick, can I...
Yeah, I realize that, and I know, I want to go watch the baseball game, but, um, the, what does it, what is, what is the meaning that it's not occupied by a human being or beings on a regular basis? What defines that? If I have a piece of property in town and it's not my residence, but I had, you know, adequate pins there or something like that, can I not visit that property daily and take care of it if I've got something there? I'm not sure, I'm trying to get exactly what you mean, because I'm not, it's vague to me.
I think, I'm not, I think the way the ordinance reads is not occupied on a regular daily basis. In other words, somebody lives there on a daily basis is intent.
Does that occupied means residing? Is that what that's?
That's what living there is.
Yes.
Okay.
For example, if somebody bought a piece of property, they couldn't put, keep it as a, keeping dogs or animals there without living there, and even though they would just come by once a day to feed them, or do whatever, that's more like a kennel. This is to prevent something like that from happening. Our ordinance seemed to have a little loophole in there, if I'm not mistaken. Ms. Green?
This was, well, not only was it written for the protection of animals, it was also written for the protection of neighbors too. You know, some neighbors had, and as Harry can attest to, had to live with some pretty bad things.
Mr. Thomas?
How does this impact somebody that leaves town for three weeks and has a pet sitter come by once a day?
Ms. Green?
They would still be living there.
They're not occupied, are they, though?
It doesn't say that. Oh, it's not occupied by, well, if they have a pet sitter.
Yes, sir.
Could we, could we add that it just, that it is their regular residence? Of course, people would, you know, the exception of pet sitters, because it is, it is all about preventing a house from being used as a kennel by an absentee owner.
Would you, you want to recommend a verbiage to go in there, Mr. Meyer?
Let's see.
Or Ms. Green?
Well, it says that is not occupied by human beings or beings on a regular basis. That would answer Bob's pet sitter, because there's a being at a regular basis. It would...
But it's, it's not any different than what I said about, you know, somebody going by there every day, that, you know, that is, would be a pet service or a friend.
That would be an occupation.
That would, that would not be an occupant.
Ms. Snyder?
When we started this ordinance well over a year ago, the whole point of it was to stop abandoned buildings from being a home for animals that got to see their owner maybe once a day. Neighbors had to put up with barking, animals were stuck inside or outside with all kinds of problems and stuff, so the whole point is simply so, this doesn't happen. Now, if someone goes on vacation for a few weeks, but they have a pit sitter, pet sitter who comes in, they are not being rude, crude, or mean to their animals. We should not have a problem, especially not in Eureka, in regards to somebody's on vacation, so someone's going to call the ACO and everything else. We don't do that here, not normal human beings.
No man on it.
If we want to add a line saying, you know, something about the babysitting part, fine, but otherwise, we have waited for this for over a year. Let's protect our animals and quit being extremists. No offense, Bob.
Ms. Harmon?
I think that, I think the question really is, is if it's not written correctly, then somebody can argue it if, if the city actually does come and, you know, has an issue with particular address, persons that own it, whatever. I mean, if it isn't written correctly, then it, it's kind of ineffective. So, that's really what the question is, is it written correctly based on the scenarios that everybody has just answered? And I think too, I think the question I have is whether or not a, an individual is, say, removed from a home and will be spending time elsewhere, not by choice, what the city's responsible, or what the city has the capability of doing if there are animals left in a home for more than one day without a pet sitter? For some reason, I'm, I have to kind of agree.
I think that's a separate issue.
Do you think?
Yeah.
Even though it's on a daily basis, this says on a daily basis?
I think what you're talking about is a separate issue, especially if they're removed because of no cause of... If somebody has a comment or a way to, they want to add section one, otherwise, yes, Ms. Snyder?
This is written properly. It takes care of the reason it was brought up well over a year ago. It stops animals from being virtually abandoned even though they're fed every day, big deal. It stops it from that, and that's all that matters. Start another ordinance on other stuff if you want.
Ms. McLuhan?
Oh, well, I was going to let Ms. Green go first.
Ms. Green?
Why don't we just write it as animals at, at a location that is not a residence of a human being? What says? Animals at a location that is not occupied, why don't we just put, that is a residence, whether it's a rental or...
I don't think that's going to solve the problem either.
Okay, all right.
I have one neighbor that would tell you that I'm not a human being.
I might agree on occasion.
I might agree with her.
But I, I don't, I think, I don't like, when we see something that's faulty in terms of how legal it is, I don't like trying to put in the correct word here at this table. I think the city attorney should do, look at it.
Well, we're, I'm open for if you want to defer this to the city attorney, we can do that.
Okay, then I, I move that we defer this to the city attorney to review the section one.
Same.
All right.
The legality of section one.
Discussion?
Not in a, again.
All those in favor deferring this to the city attorney for additional information, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Three, two?
Four, two.
All right, pass it then. All right. That brings us up to our next item is resolution for financing purchase of vehicles for parks and recreation.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Second. The Parks Commission at meeting, I don't know whether it was the meeting before last, we had, we approved waiting the bids, then the parks went out and solicited bids from the banks to finance this, and they received a, a good bid from one of the local banks, Equity Bank, and so this has come for us to approve that financing purchase of those. That's what this resolution's for. Mr. Thomas?
Is this like one loan to cover both vehicles, or is it two loans?
Correct. It's one loan.
One loan for both vehicles?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What, is the payout on it?
Oh.
Is it five years, is that what it is?
Sixty months.
Sixty months, yeah.
Oh, is it on, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, it is there.
Sixty months at a 2.91 percent.
Yeah, five, I'm sorry. And I had already read that too.
Ms. Harmon?
I have a question for Justin.
That ball.
The two vehicles, what are the year, what are the, what year vehicles are those?
Two thirteen Ford Starcraft and a two fourteen Ford E350.
Okay.
It's in my package, anyway.
Let me just see if I'm looking at the right page. Do you have it?
Mr. McClung?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and assign this resolution a number and read it for passage.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Six, zero. Resolution seven, six, three. Resolution in support of financing the purchase of two vehicles for Parks and Recreation, Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Whereas the City Council of Eureka Springs, having been informed that the Eureka Springs Parks and Recreation Commission has received financing quotes for the purchase of the shuttle bug vehicle for $28,958, and the Midwest Shuttle vehicle for $35,000, and whereas the Eureka Springs Parks and Recreation Commission has accepted the most favorable terms of financing for both vehicles from Equity Bank for sixty months and a 2.91% interest rate. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that the City Council wishes to express support for the purchase of both of these vehicles by means of financing from Equity Bank, and does authorize the Parks Commission to make the necessary financing arrangements and complete the purchase of these vehicles.
All right. That takes care of that. Thank you very much. All right, that brings us up to discussion of the November 11th Veterans Committee. Motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss.
Second.
All right. I believe last year that we had the same thing, and we moved it to the, no, we didn't?
It was in the, we went, I printed the minutes from the first January...
Oh, you sure did.
... meeting on the vote. Very, very lengthy discussion and a vote to do it. Have the meeting, is what I mean.
Okay, we went ahead and decided to have the meeting. I'm sorry. So basically, I guess this is just verifying this is what we're wanting, we're still wanting to go ahead and have the meeting on the eleventh?
No.
Mr. Thomas?
I think that we accepted that calendar on the basis of the city attorney's advice, which you had to set it up, and then you could change it. But, but if you just left it blank, you couldn't put in a new meeting, but you can change the date of a current one.
Mr. McClung?
My question is, and this is related, you know, are we going to, where are we with our budget? It's not, it's not anything that, I don't know of anything that we necessarily got pressing that's huge. We have, we need to be having a budget workshop or something.
Well, we have that, but I don't, I mean, that's being, right now, we're getting all that information together.
Right. So, I mean, we can, we can set a budget workshop up where it doesn't, doesn't need to be a scheduled meeting anyway, wouldn't necessarily be at that time, so, you know, I think that we're moving, moving along well enough that if we want to ax the meeting, we can ax the meeting.
Ms. Harmon?
I just have a question, because I don't have my list here in front of me. Did we have a workshop scheduled for that same day?
No.
Nothing? Okay. Can I, I was going to say, can I say something else? But let Mickey go ahead.
All right, Mickey.
I would suggest highly, it being November, okay, we have technically scheduled the 11th and the 25th. The 25th is a couple of days before Thanksgiving. An awful lot of us are out of town. I would suggest, November traditionally being a slow month council-wise, we make one meeting for the 18th that covers, that includes the budget meeting, and this covers both meetings without messing around with people wanting to be away for Thanksgiving. And this is what we have done over past years, many times.
Ms. Harmon?
Can I make a motion?
Certainly.
Okay, I make a motion that we cancel the November 11th City Council meeting.
Second.
Discussion? All right, motion been made to cancel the November 11th meeting. All those in favor, sing five, saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Just one, no? Okay. All right, so moved. Ms. Snyder?
I make a motion that we change our November 25th meeting to November 18th in view of the American Thanksgiving holiday. Be here on your own.
All right, no seconds, the motion dies. All right, that concludes our meeting for the agenda. We got Agenda 7. Mr. Thomas?
Yes, recommend, or not a recommendation, the Entertainment District Committee would like to have a discussion of permanent historic downtown district on the next agenda.
I'll second that.
Entertainment District, permanent.
Permanent?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Let's see, rush.
Okay. Ms. Harmon?
Do I have to make a motion to add the discussion or the new business as the ordinance for animal law changes back on?
No.
Okay, can't do it, right?
No, you don't need to. We'll go ahead.
Oh, you'll all, okay, perfect.
See where Mr. Weaver is. Anybody else?
Norstee.
We will definitely have that also. Okay? Anybody else?
Who's, Harry, the second on...
I'm going to do Norstee.
I'll second it.
Yeah, Harry, the second. Doesn't matter.
Sure, why not?
All right, anybody else? That brings us up to City Council comments. I'm going to start with Mr. McClung.
Cardinals are playing baseball tonight, and it's, it's a really tough situation for them. They're down two, zero, and so they need to win four straight, really, and kind of get it over in six.
So, they'll have to pray for them.
That's right. Yeah, pray for the Satanist Cardinals, for a win. That's it.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Brace yourself for the zombies.
All right.
Ms. Harmon?
Nothing.
Ms. Snyder?
I'm ready for zombies. Just want to, I don't know if it's been in the papers or not, on this coming Friday and Saturday at the Hartz parking lot is the American Legion food truck donation set up for Flynn Street. So anybody who wants to give either money or food of any kind, we will have a van out there that we collect all this food and then take it over to Flynn Street. That's it.
Ms. Green?
Nice to see a busy October.
Yes, it is. Mr. Thomas?
No comment.
All right, well, we have a lot of activities coming up for October. Did we do with, oh. Did the City Council get a chance to see the sister city agreements? I'm not sure you did or not. Last week, we went, I was fortunate enough to go to a group meeting with a group of poets from Longshai, China, Longshi, China, to establish a sister city in poets and the arts. And in return, I'm not sure if the people have seen that, they gave us a beautiful print for the city hall for us to hang up on there. And so it was really a wonderful evening. There was about, I want to say six poets, and they all read their poetry in Chinese, and then they had an interpreter, and then we had some Americans came in from, one came from New York, and Dr. Jonathan Stallings, who is a resident, or not a resident, but a native, born here in Eureka Springs and graduate of our schools, actually brought all this together. And he's been hosting the U.S.-China poetry dialogue for the past several years. And they encouraged, he was the one who established, when he was over there talking to the mayor of Longshi about wanting to establish a sister city agreement. And so Mr. Stallings, or Dr. Stallings, is to be commended for pulling this all together. And it's a great cultural exchange that happened, and it was a wonderful little time ceremony with those people. And then they went on over to Fayetteville and had another ceremony over there. So we are now an official sister city with Longshi, China, with poetry and the arts, which is really kind of neat. Upcoming events, one of our busiest times and a beautiful time in the Ozarks, and especially in Eureka Springs, we have the 11th Annual Voices from the Silent City, October 17th, 18th, 19th, and 25th and 26th out at the city cemetery. If you've never been, this is quite a, quite an event. It's really a theatrical production out there, coming back from historic people who are, who are buried out at the cemetery, and it's just a wonderful time. So if you get a chance, it also benefits our Eureka Springs Historical Museum. And then we have the Mad Hatter's Ball. It's at October the 18th at the Crescent Hotel, starting at 7:00 p.m. And then that same night, Don Klein concert, October 18th and 7:30 in the odd. And again, that should be a great concert. Oktoberfest is the next day, October 19th, from 10 to 5, down on Center Street. And then that same evening, here at the auditorium, we have Intrepid Theater Halloween show, and he'll be also doing another production on the 26th at 8 o'clock, no, I'm sorry, at 8:30 at the odd. And then the Downtown Merchants on October 25th from 5 to 8, will have a trick-or-treat street. And also down at, out at Turpin Town Creek on the 25th, from 7 to 9, will be the Howl Halloween at Turpin Town Creek. And then the head, this should be fun, the Headless Horseman Ball at Center Stage on the 25th, 7 to 10. Rocky Horror Picture Show on the 25th, from 10 to 11, here at the auditorium. And then on the 26th, we have the Carroll County Solid Waste Bulk Waste Collection. So anything that y'all have, what picked up, from mattresses to refrigerators or anything else, they'll be having a collection point out at Lake Leatherwood. And then the 26th becomes the Eighth Annual Zombie Crawl, all day with the crawl beginning at 6:00 p.m. and lasting until they all...
Crawl away.
Crawl away.
When, when does it start?
6:00 p.m. is the crawl, but they have events all day long, starting at noon, going on all, all day. So it's going to be quite a, quite a few things. Miss Stryker has gone out and over and beyond her, her duties and has assembled, I think, how many parking spaces?
1,070.
I was going to say, 1,070 parking spaces. So that's around 10, 1,070. So we're going to have a lot of people. Last year, we had over 5,000 people using the trolley. So we're hoping we'll have more this year. Anyway, that's all I have.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you all.